I'd like to call the March 15th Board of Education meeting to order and ask if you would all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for attending our meeting tonight. We'd like to welcome you here and we also would like to remind everyone that we do videotape our meetings, so if you have an aversion to being on camera, either don't turn around or you may leave, one of the two, but we just wanted to remind you of that in case someone would be concerned about that. Cameras are located in the back of the room, so if you really do have a desire to be on camera, you can turn around and look at the camera, they'd be happy to take your picture. With that, our first item of business tonight is the adoption of our agenda. I would entertain a motion to that effect.
A move to adopt the agenda as presented?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented. Do I have any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. The next portion of our meeting is our superintendent's report, and I will turn that over to Dr. Carpenter.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, board members, we will have a pretty brief report as we prepare to honor and recognize some of our adults and young people. One of the more important things going on, or exciting things in the district is the beginning of our Teacher of the Year selection process, and that will culminate on April 11th at the Stanley Historic Event Space Downtown Lee's Summit with the big announcement. So that's 4:30 in the afternoon, we look forward to seeing you all there. From the standpoint of parent and community involvement, we had our senior citizens tour in and around Longview Farm Elementary School, and that was very well received by our seniors and our community, so that was an exciting time. If you missed Taste of Lee's Summit, you probably don't want to miss it again. I've had the opportunity to go two years in a row, and it's such a good time for our community and a day of giving for our students and our staff. And it's my understanding that the event this year raised $117,230, so that's very, very exciting. And during that celebration, the crew celebrated 25 years, 600 guests and about 80 volunteers. So where's Cheryl Frankie, is she here? Well, we just give her a round of applause for leading that major. In the area of governance, we had the opportunity to host our local delegation during our legislative breakfast in partnership with the Citizens Advisory Council. In attendance, we had Senator Syrupoy, Representative Faust, Representative Rober, Representative Rowland, and Representative Stacy. And during that time, they talked about those acts or legislative actions that impact education that are gaining some level of momentum at the state level. I would tell you that a lot of what we heard related to tax incentive programming and a lot of what we heard related to expansion of charter schools. And of course, there was some conversation on the safety front as well. And I think it's important to engage in that dialogue and keep that relationship open, but at the same time, it gave the district an opportunity to express our concerns with some of the potential pending litigation, or legislation, I'm sorry. Community Safety Meeting, we've heard a lot about safety lately, and we've seen a lot at the national level, and we've also unfortunately seen some things at the local level. Because of that, I've spent a lot of time with our sheriff, and we've put together what we're calling a Community Safety Conversation, and that will be held on April 25th at City Hall beginning at 6:30 PM. So mark your calendars for that event, and Chief Forbes and myself will have a panel delegation of persons from the district and the department having a broader community conversation about this notion of school safety. And really, it's community safety. I mean, we can try and narrow it down to a school focus, but schools are only a small microcosm of the greater community, and I believe that to be very important as we lean into this conversation. The final thing I'll address, Mr. President and board members, is yesterday's nationwide walkout. And I would tell you that we had somewhere in the neighborhood of a couple thousand students participate at all of our secondary schools, and regardless of where you fall on that issue, what I will simply say is what a powerful day of learning. What a powerful day of learning for a child who wanted to engage because they really had to know their why and lean into what could be a difficult conversation, and also the students that chose not to engage and what was on their mind relative to their learning and not engaging. I think you only had to turn on your television for a few minutes last evening to see that students across this country engaged in something that would be one of their most memorable, highest-powered learning experiences over the course of their school career. And I would tell you, our kids conducted themselves in exceptional, exceptional fashion, and I want to give them a shout out as well. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Carpenter. We begin the portion of our agenda that recognizes various things that are going on in presentations, and our first recognition is National Athletic Trainers Month. During March, we recognize our district's valuable athletic trainers. These highly skilled professionals dedicate themselves to the health and safety of our student athletes. Our entire Lee's Summit R7 community appreciates the work that you do and your positive impact on student success. Susie Humphries, Lee's Summit West High School, and Jessica DeWitt, Jessica DeWitt from Lee's Summit North, will represent athletic trainers during the meeting tonight. We celebrate our outstanding R7 Modern Language Department teachers during National Foreign Language Week held March 7th through the 13th this year. Our students, staff members, and families appreciate the work of these educators who share their knowledge and help prepare students for our rapidly changing global society. Maria Pabon, Lee's Summit High School Spanish teacher, will be representing all staff members in this area at the March meeting tonight.
Shouldn't you have said that in Spanish?
Morey bueno.
Maria would not want me to try to say all of that in Spanish. Next, we recognize Math, Engineering, Technology, and Science Week. During this week, we recognize our district's math, engineering, technology, and science teachers and the positive influence they have on our students. Our entire community is grateful for your commitment to providing outstanding instruction in this important area. Tonight, Carol Keating, 712 Math Curriculum Instructor, will represent all the staff in this area. Tonight, we are also going to recognize Principal's Day and the Missouri High School Principal of the Year. Dr. Jeff Meisenheimer, Principal of Lee's Summit North High School, was named the 2018 Missouri State High School Principal of the Year by the Missouri Association of Secondary School Principals. Jeff will receive an award at the organization's Spring Conference scheduled for March 26th. Dr. Meisenheimer was selected for this award based on his impact in the areas of collaborative leadership, curriculum, instruction, and assessment, and personalization of the learning environment. He was named Principal of the Year by the Greater Kansas City Missouri Principals Association in April of 2017. Dr. Meisenheimer has served as Principal of Lee's Summit North for five years. He previously served as Assistant Principal at Lee's Summit High School and Ruskin High School. 2010, he was named Assistant Principal of the Year by the Greater Kansas City Missouri Principals Association and by the Missouri Association of Secondary School Principals. In addition, he is also one of the three finalists for National Assistant Principal of the Year. We are really excited to have Jeff on our staff, and we're honored to present this award to him tonight. Let's give him another round of applause. Next, we want to recognize the Missouri Elementary Art Educator of the Year. Amy Freesha, art teacher at Prairie View Elementary, was recently named as the Missouri Art Education Association Elementary Art Educator of the Year. The winner of the statewide award is selected by his or her peers as an exemplary educator who displays outstanding leadership, commitment to teaching, and accomplishments in the classroom and state organization. Mrs. Freesha will be honored at the MAEA Award Ceremony scheduled for April 6th in Branson. An art educator since 2000, she began teaching at Prairie View Elementary in 2007, also serving as traveling art teacher at Richardson, Meadow Lane, and Summit Point Elementary Schools. Before coming to Lee's Summit R7, Mrs. Freesha taught at Johnson Elementary in Hickman Mills School District from 2000 to 2007. Within Hickman Mills, she was named the district's Teacher of the Year in 2003. Mrs. Freesha has been published nationally on several occasions, including two articles in Arts and Activities and one in Scholaske. She earned her Bachelor's Degree of Fine Arts from Kansas City Art Institute, her Bachelor's Degree in Education from Southeast Missouri State, and her Master's Degree in Teaching from Webster University. Thank you, Amy. And we now recognize the Missouri Council Social Studies Teacher of the Year. Rhonda Ireland, Lee's Summit West High School teacher, was recently named Missouri Council for the Social Studies Teacher of the Year. She will be honored at the National World War I Memorial and Museum during MCSS Conference Luncheon on February 23rd. As a state honoree, she will compete for National Council of the Social Studies Teacher of the Year. Miss Ireland was praised for her dedication to improving the education of both her students and colleagues. According to MCSS, she credits the Lee's Summit R7 School District for promoting the workshop model, which has dramatically changed her teaching style. "It is a difficult shift that students are so used to being told what they need to learn versus uncovering it on their own," she said. "Workshop requires an incredible amount of upfront planning, an enormous amount of research, lab classroom hosting, as well as observation of my small group cadre with focusing on student ownership." At Lee's Summit West High School, Mrs. Ireland, Miss Ireland teaches international baccalaureate history of the Americas and the advanced studies world history. She has worked at West for three years, previously serving as social studies teacher and lead teacher at Lee's Summit High School and as an R7 School District Social Studies Curriculum Specialist. She has worked for the R7 School District for 25 years. Okay, we are ready for the Summit Lakes Middle School, Lee's Summit West High School Ukulele Club performance.
Our ukulele club, we have a, we're kind of proud. We've been a club since about the first five ukulele tours, four years ago?
First five ukuleles.
And then, um, our club supports the Hatchet of Ice Room, where its kids have a place to be the heart of something special. And our club, we encourage to audition for the award show, so they are that required for the, 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 for the,
Awesome.
Thank you, ukulele players. That was awesome. Linda, we're ready for our comments from the public. Do we have any today?
We do have one public comment from Vicki Sears, and I would also ask the board to hit F5 to refresh your board docs, please.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Sears. Well, I'm pretty loud, but... I live in Lee's Summit, and first of all, I want to thank you all for the opportunity for me to be able to come and speak with you all tonight. I have a 14-year-old daughter at Pleasantly Middle School, and I have a 17-year-old daughter at Lee's Summit High School, and I also want to offer a shout-out for our students demonstrating their ability to... What they did yesterday, I'm sorry. I am here to express my concern for school safety and to show my support for the Lee's Summit School District as well. Myself and several other Lee's Summit residents have come together rather recently to create a group that we have named Lee's Summit for Safe Schools. And it's number four. Very catchy. Our vision is to support a safe learning environment for students and school staff by supporting intervention and prevention programs in the schools, by reaching out to policymakers, by continuously advocating for a secure environment on each school campus, and by demonstrating our tolerance for any offense that endangers the safety of those students and staff. Please note that a key word in our vision statement is "support." We feel that it is critical that we come together as a community, as parents, students, school board members, school staff, school nurses, law enforcement, and numerous others in our community, because we need to work together to be successful. I ask of you to open the doors for Lee's Summit for Safe Schools so we can learn about how to be successful in supporting the school district and our children. We do not seek to be political or confrontational in any way, but hope to work with the board in securing safer school campuses and to help in any way we can by raising awareness. We are very new to this, and we need your guidance and patience to help us be successful. And once again, my name is Vicki Sears, and it's Lee's Summit for Safe Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to offer to get in touch with Rachel Segobia. Where did she go? I can't see her. Rachel Segobia with Lee's Summit Cares, so you might want to talk to her.
Okay, at this point in our meeting, it's time for our board reports and meetings attended, so we'll start down here with Kim on her end and get those reports from our board.
Thank you, President White. I am represented to the Lee's Summit Educational Foundation, and Dr. Carpenter very aptly described what part of what I was going to talk about tonight, which was Taste of Lee's Summit. I was very happy to see, I think, almost all of our board members and many of our school administrators there at Taste of Lee's Summit. It was a very successful event this year. Once again, it raised $117,230. And it was our ninth, actually, our 19th annual Taste of Lee's Summit event, 25 years of giving for the whole, for the foundation itself. And we want, we had nearly 600 guests and 80 volunteers, including music parents from each of the high schools, from Great Beginnings, Early Childhood Education Center, and the opportunity to sample cuisine from 14 different businesses. So that was a terrific event, as it always is, and I appreciate Dr. Carpenter giving a shout-out to Cheryl Frankie for that, because we couldn't do it without her. Also, her assistant, Jordan Newman, it was very wonderful, too, in that, and as well as all of our volunteers. Currently, we have volunteers and LSCF board members who are reading applications for 60 scholarships that help our scholarship sponsors select the winners. So that is a big deal this time of year. It takes a lot. I just received one of those reading assignments in my inbox, and it takes quite a while to read through, depending on how many students apply for each of those scholarships. So it's a commitment, so we need to say thank you to the board members of LSCF and the volunteers who offered to read those scholarships. Quickly, following that scholarship process is, right on its heels, is the PEEK grant process. PEEK grants are for our teachers to enhance learning in the classrooms, and this year the foundation has agreed to award up to $65,000 in classroom grants to our teachers. Applications are coming in great. That will also take a committee of volunteers and of board members to read through all of those grant applications, prioritize those, and then be prepared for the PEEK patrol that goes out and awards those PEEK grants, which is a ton of fun. That's why I like to go on that trip every year and ride one of our smaller buses around the district with balloons and large checks. So I am looking forward to that trip in May. But anyway, I think that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Adam?
We are not entertaining any TIFs right now that I'm aware of, and finance will go later.
Julie?
All right. I represent Team Lee's Summit, and we did a huge survey, and it was very interesting. This is my first year on Team Lee's Summit, so I loved reading through, I mean, it was a large stack, but I took it on a flight than I had, and it was very interesting to read all of the information. I hope that people feel, for lack of better words, safe, just to say how you feel, and, you know me, I would be saying that. And we have some items that we have proposed to the board, and we will be voting on that later today, so I hope we have a good outcome on that. And who runs this team is Dr. Miller and Dr. Hedrick, and I don't really know what we're going to do next year without these two. It saddens me, but anyway, it's a very well-run team. I'm also on the Lee's Summit Cares board, and I, we're trying to get this "respect and kindness," these words, out to everyone. We're thinking about, you know, going to McDonald's and see if we can buy some stickers and see if we can put that on bags, or, you know, we do stuff with cold water, and they do lunches in the summer. Anyway, if you have any ideas, please send them my way. I just want to get those two words out to this community, and I think that's it. Thanks.
Jackie?
Thank you. My responsibility for committees at this time is still the government relations programs, and I know Dr. Carpenter has mentioned that we had a successful legislative breakfast and have seen several of those folks since then, and, and those who couldn't attend due to scheduling conflicts, and they really appreciate that we are continuing a direct dialogue with them. So I want to commend all of the staff and the Community Advisory Committee that are, that's really a motivating organization behind that, that particular event. And as we mentioned, legislative activity, I know that the Budget Committee in the House worked really late into the evening, actually, early morning this morning, and I don't have a summary to, to offer here, but they're going to try to get to that budget on the House floor here in, in, very soon, in the next couple of weeks. The Missouri General Assembly does begin its annual spring break here this week, and they will be, they will not be in Jeff City, they will be in their home districts for the week that happens to coincide with our spring break. And Monday night, because they were working late on the floor, the bill to give school boards a voice in TIF decisions, that committee meeting was postponed, so I don't, I haven't heard whether anything's been rescheduled quite yet from Chairman Swan. I want to offer up some prospective information, because by the time we have our next board meeting, this information will be essentially irrelevant, and that is that the Lee's Summit Chamber is hosting its R7 School Board Candidate Forum on March 27th, that's a Tuesday. The meet and greet begins at 5:00 PM and goes until 6:00 PM. The candidate forum will, is scheduled between 6:00 and 8:00 PM. All of those events are at the Gamber Center here in Lee's Summit. So it's, if you didn't get that information down, it's easily accessible on the Lee's Summit Chamber website under its Events tab. And then, as a result, a week later, on Tuesday, April 3rd, from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM, the polls are open for you to make your selections. That's my report.
Thank you, Jackie. Dennis?
Just a couple of things. It's most have been mentioned. I will tell you that coming up on, on April the 23rd, we will have our CAC Steering Committee meeting to plan our May 7th, last one for the year, CAC meeting, and that one will be held at Miller Park. The CAC another opportunity to see other facilities in our, in our school. I did, there is, as Adam has said, we have no information on any TIF meetings at this time. Just like to make a note of the, again, thanks to all who attended the Taste of Lee's Summit and, and those who are involved in the legislative, legislative, pull my mic down, legislative breakfast. Well, at least I remember to turn it on this time. I, I think that's it. I do have, I got an email just before the board meeting from Ms. Bologna, and she asked me to highlight, so I'm going to, I'm going to just hit the highlights, and I'm going to give to Linda, and she wants to put this in the record she can, so. She just wanted to thank everybody for the great chili cook-off. It was a fun event at, at Miller Park Center, and, and I was there also during that time, and, and the kids did a wonderful job. She talked, as Julie did, about Team Lee's Summit and all the things that have been going on there. She visited PLMS and Woodland. She's talked about the legislative breakfast and then the Teacher of the Year process is in effect, so that's Ms. Bologna's report also.
Thank you, Dennis. A number of board members have attended a number of events. As I've attended those, I've noticed that many of our other board members are also at all of these events. I had the opportunity to go to Meadow Lane's 25th, or not Meadow Lane, excuse me, Richardson's 25th Anniversary Blowout Party the other day, along with Dr. Carpenter and some of our administrators and Kim. Lot of fun, great event. That was, reminds me of how much fun school can be. And then also, the, yesterday, had an opportunity to attend Pleasantly Elementary's Leadership Day, along with Kim was there as well. And again, just an opportunity to see what our students are capable of doing all by themselves, without a whole lot of direction or supervision. So I think that speaks very well of our young people in our district, and I would echo what Dr. Carpenter said. I, I did observe one of our rally events that was at Lee's Summit High. It wasn't, it was an orderly and well-thought-out opportunity for students to share their concerns, which they did, and then when they were instructed it was time to return to class, they did. And so, you know, it was a very nice, a very nice event that I think gave our students an opportunity to participate in the learning process with regard to their civics, civic engagement. With that, we'll move on to the next part of our agenda, which is our finance report.
Finance Committee met yesterday morning. Our investments are through February total approximately $136.8 million. Our revenue and expense report, variances in revenues and expenses by fund were reviewed. The variances are due to timing of receipts and expenses. Other finance issues, construction and maintenance update, an update regarding selective projects was provided, including the Woodland Sewer, tennis court resurfacing at the high schools, and the BCMS gym floor replacement. There was a MIC change orders. Both change orders result in credits to the overall MIC project. Change order number 17 provides credits in four contracts to compensate for costs incurred by the district to address dust remediation and furniture storage. And change order 18 includes a credit for an overhead door contract provided by the district. Staff are in the process of finalizing total costs for MIC and the allocation of expenses. The 2018-19 Team Lee's Summit Salary and Benefit Recommendation. Team Lee's Summit Salary and Benefit Improvements were reviewed by Dr. Jeff Miller. The team's proposals recommends salary schedule staff movements for each salary schedule, which results in a district-wide average salary increase of 2.74% and falls within the budget estimate of $4.3 million. The addition of, of a stipend for occupational physical therapy national board certification in the annual amount of $2,000. Continuance of district-paid insurance for health, dental, and disability, continuing the Employment Assistance Program, and matching their retirement contributions. Purchasing and distribution program evaluation. Krista Bagley reviewed the department's report. Specific purchasing and distribution functions which support all district services and the broader Lee's Summit community were highlighted. Department staff were complimented for their efforts positively impacting district instruction, finances, and operation. And to see that project yesterday, or see the presentation was, really brings home what a family, I call it, in the, in the R7 School District, because basically that department, that area, does all the things behind the scene to make the things that are seen in our classrooms and throughout our district make them go. And it was, it was a real, real pleasure to see that presentation. Mr. President, we do have a couple actions to recommend whenever you are ready. I would move that the board approves 6.02 to approve the transfer of $1,685,903.31 from the general fund to the special revenue fund.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move money from the general fund to the special revenue fund. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
The next one is 6.03 to, I move that the board approve the treasurer's report and payment of the bills.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the treasurer's report and payment of the bills. Do we have any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. The next part, portion of our agenda is a consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure provide for a consent agenda which lists several items for approval by the board in a single motion. Most of these items listed under the consent agenda have gone through board subcommittee review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. Okay, so I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Jackie, did you have anything? Oh, oh, very well. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Kim?
Yes. On item 7.08, approving administration reorganization for 2018-2019 regarding, and this one, we are voting on the Assistant Superintendent of Equity and Student Services position. Regarding the newly created position, the job description, which was sent to us a few days ago, states under certificates and licenses for this position that it lists Missouri Administrative Certificate. That's different than a superintendent certificate, which is a requirement for all job titles that are on the assistant superintendent level. I think it's very important that we require the superintendent certification for all jobs at the assistant superintendent level, and because of that factor, I don't feel comfortable voting on that particular item in this consent agenda at this time, so I'm going to abstain from the vote.
If you would prefer to have that removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda, that is something we can do.
That's fine if we, if, if it will provoke a discussion amongst our group, that's fine with me.
Would you make a motion to that effect?
I would move to have it placed on the regular agenda, that item, 7.08.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Mr. President, actually, for Robert's Rules of Orders, that would have to be offered as a substitute motion.
It's a substitute motion for the original motion.
Okay. I will offer that as a substitute motion for the original motion.
Second.
So as I understand the motion, we are, we are, the motion is to approve the consent agenda items 701 through 707 and 709, and the administration reorganization, 7.08 be removed and placed on the regular agenda.
That is correct. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on that motion? Adam?
Just wanted to clarify that we are, at this point, voting on the remaining consent agenda items and then moving on to a separate item for 7.08.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the table and a second. Does anyone need clarification again on what the motion is? Okay, so we are, we are voting to approve all of the consent agenda items except 7.08, which will be moved to items for discussion. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, our item eight is a consent agenda for contracts over $5,000, which we do not have any of those, so we move on to item number nine, which is our consent agenda for contracts over $5,000. And I would entertain a motion on that one, please.
I move that to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Those are items number 9.01 through 9.08.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Julie?
With the risk of being, sounding critical, and Dr. Sharp will probably look at you on this, but Lee's Summit West Prom, is that about the average of what we always spend on prom? I just doesn't, just didn't hit me the last couple of years. Is that the same?
Yes, ma'am. Pretty consistent across, and they've utilized the same company and the same facility for several years. Beautiful, beautiful committee, so yes.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions on the consent agenda items 901 through 908? Kim?
Yeah, just a, just a quick informational question here. Regarding 9.06, regarding the Education Advisory Board contract and the amount of $24,500, would, would this be our first year to contract with Education Advisory Board, and could I perhaps get a few examples of the benefit our district leadership would receive from that contract?
Mr. President, board members, this would be the first year that we would work with EAB. In terms of the benefits, EAB, they're, they're thought leaders in the field in what they assist cabinet-level administrators and directors and the like with, are those opportunities to really, really formulate the research basis for any types of new initiatives in the district. And as we worked through some of the changes or some of the new initiatives going into the new year, what we realized was there's always this conversation about transparency, and there's always this conversation about meaningful or constructive two-way engagement. And as we attempted to do that, i.e. with the Innovation Track model, it didn't take long for many cabinet-level administrators to rack up many, many hours and build in background knowledge. And some of the most progressive school districts in our country utilize a service, not unlike EAB, to assist cabinets with that type of a workload. So as we look at our board priorities, as we look at comprehensive facilities master planning, how can we get those best practices in front of us pretty quickly?
And would our building-level administrators also be able to access that information, or just the central office administrators?
Well, they would tell you that you can spread the length of that as far as you want across the district, but they will also tell you that they can't work with more than one initiative at a time. So I don't know that districts would spread it across 28 building sites, because then you get in a situation when the administration may think there's a priority, or the board may think there's a priority, but we can't get moving because one of 28 sites is moving with the work.
Okay, other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item 10 is our items for decision, and we have one that... 1001, okay. So the, if, do you need, we need to refresh that? Okay, so the first item on the agenda is 10.01, to approve administration reorganization, and let's get a motion on the table for that, and then we can have discussion.
Move that the board approve the addition of one FTE for the Assistant Superintendent of Equity and Student Services.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Kim?
Well, I've, I've already stated my concern. Dr. Carpenter sent us the job description for that a few days ago, and I spent quite a bit of time reading through the job description, and that is a very extensive job description, and I noticed in there that it does include several of the duties that are currently in, kind of under the umbrella of some of the other assistant superintendents, too, so I don't know if that's the same as, or in addition to, or taking away from some of those other spots if we're reorganizing other people's job descriptions, but that was a, quite an extensive job description. I, that person who would ever take that position, that would be huge. It, it looks like a big job to me. But my, as I said before, my main concern was really the certification piece in this, in that I think it's vitally important that all of our assistant superintendents, as this job is listed as an Assistant Superintendent of Equity and Student Services, that they all have that superintendent, superintendency certification, that they're very familiar with the background of all educational systems and, you know, and have the qualifications that our superintendents must have. So that was my concern in the job description, is that we don't have that listed as, as a superintendent certification.
Mr. President?
Mr. President, for that question, I will respectfully have to defer to Human Resources, because this job description was created in keeping with our normal processes in the district, which is consultation with EMS and the posting of a job description. And in, also in the spirit of good governance, I would also say that it would have been very, very appropriate for us to have this information in advance, so that we might be able to delve a little deeper. So I'm sorry, Dr. Miller, go ahead.
Actually, I probably would refer to Dr. Carlson and Dr. Coyer in this particular situation, because I wasn't necessarily involved in the details on this, so I don't know if one of them, Dr. Coyer?
As Dr. Carlson makes his way forward...
As Dr. Carlson makes his way forward, I can share with you that we would be happy to follow up with DESI regarding those qualifications. The position is posted consistent with our practices with EMS, and that posting and qualifications was posted similar to the way we have posted other assistant superintendent positions, but happy to work with Dr. Carlson to go back through EMS to make sure we address your concern and absolutely hear and understand what you present as a concern.
Not necessarily a lot more to add, other than we will double-check, triple-check, but in conversations, you look on the DESI website, director, executive director, assistant superintendent is not specified. You do have superintendent, you do have sped director. These positions, for example, superintendent obviously requires superintendent certification, sped director requires special education administrator certification. But typically, in the conversations I've had with DESI, and I'm 90% sure, but we're going to double-check and make 100% sure, that the executive director, director, assistant super positions require administrator certification, but do not require superintendent certification. And some of that is a superintendent certification, you can't actually start getting that until you actually serve in assistant superintendent, superintendent roles. So, for example, anyone that's a director, executive director, would not have that certification, but would be eligible to apply for it once they are an assistant superintendent or superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Carlson, and I certainly don't want to go against what you're saying, because I, I trust you. I did call DESI today and talk to Katie in the certification department at DESI, and asked her specifically about the assistant superintendent, if that person would need to have superintendent certification. She double-checked it with them, got back on the line and said yes, that's what she told me. So that's all I know, or I wouldn't have even brought that up today.
Sure. Well, I appreciate that, and like I said, 90% sure, and we'll, we'll double-check and make sure, and I could be wrong on that.
I might, I might just add, add to that point, there are times, and Dr. Miller, you might be able to expand my comment here, but there are times that someone may be offered a position, irregardless of what that position is, and we know that they are, one, completing coursework towards being able to apply for that particular certification, or take the position, and we know at the point of recommending and suggesting employment for an individual that they are going to pursue the necessary steps and paperwork through DESI to, to complete that, so.
Julie?
Joe? Do you have anything to add? You know me, I don't like to vote on something that I don't have 100%.
Well, I, I think we'd have to certainly follow whatever DESI says. We don't want to bring someone in and then find out that they can't work in the position that we've hired them for. So it sounds like there's some uncertainty, or at least ambiguity. Frankly, my experience sometimes with DESI has been that you get different, different answers sometimes to the same question, depending on who you talk to. And that's no, no, I'm not criticizing them, it's just the regulations can be a little bit vague on that. So I, I think the question, if I understand it, is whether the person or the position will have this specific title, or am I, is it something else? Is that the concern, that, that we want to make sure that if the person has the title of assistant superintendent, that they in fact have the required certifications to fill that role under DESI regulation?
That's correct, Mr. Hatley. That's my concern for any administrative, assistant superintendent position. Under the new reorganization plan that was presented, that position as well as others were listed as assistant superintendents. So that was just my concern, is that they, if they're listed as assistant superintendents, if that's what we're wanting, then we need to have that certification, that's my belief.
Maybe the solution would be to, to have administration confirm with DESI, make sure we get a consistent answer, and then if the posting has to be revised to reflect whatever they tell us, that's what we have to do. Otherwise, if they say it's someone who can get that certification, I know the form contracts we have for administrators have a paragraph in them that says, you know, as a, before you start work, you have to be certified, understanding you may not have it now.
Adam?
Toss-up, not sure who would be able to opine, but would it be safe to say in spirit we are likely to find many candidates that do carry the superintendent's certification and/or would be pursuing it, although it's not explicitly a minimum requirement in the job description?
That answer would be an unequivocal...
Yes. Dr. Miller, could I ask you a quick question? Have we ever had an assistant superintendent who didn't have an assist, a superintendent's certification?
Not that I'm aware of, but I think the piece to this is that the titling of the position, or taking a look at DESI and what those regs are, we could definitely check into that, but I'm not aware of that, no.
I would be reluctant at this point not to approve a position that's necessary with, with that being the, the criteria. So I, I would say that what Joe presented as an alternative makes a lot of sense, and I can't imagine that Dr. Carlson wouldn't go back and check, and if it's necessary to have that amended so that that job posting reflects that, so be it, it, it gets put in there. But right now, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to not approve the position simply because of that. Jackie?
And I, I just want to make it clear, dealing with government all the time, I appreciate that you have a person's name, but I'd like for us to make sure that we're finding the appropriate level of governance at DESI that can adequately interpret the statute or other policy requirements.
Yeah, I've, I've spoken from time to time with our general counsel there, whenever I've had issues like this come up, where we're trying to find out if somebody has to have a certification or not, so I know who to call and can work with administration to make sure we're all looped in.
Okay, is there any other discussion? We do have a motion on the table to approve this position, and at this point, then I would call for votes, so all those in favor of approving the position, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item is 10.02, Dr. Carpenter?
Yes, sir. Dr. Miller?
Absolutely. More than happy to speak regarding the work of Team Lee Summit. Team Lee Summit's met five times this year, and once again, it's a 22-member team facilitated by Dan Finn that represents every employee group. We're very unique to the fact that we have wonderful relationships with all of our employee groups that value each of them. This team, this year came to unanimous consensus based upon the available budgetary funds, which was $4.3 million, to move this recommendation to Team Lee Summit, and more importantly, to our superintendent's leadership team, as well as our superintendent. So what you see tonight is that Team Lee Summit's recommending step movement for every employee group. The district average percentage of step movement is 2.74%. You'll also notice that we try to recognize those employees that go above and beyond, that add value to our district, and in this case, we've done that with our national board certification for teachers, we've done this for maybe some certification for our technology groups, and we're at, we'd like to add, and Team Lee Summit voted to, to add, $2,000 annually for the occupational, occupational and physical therapy national certification. Ironically enough, we don't have anyone in our region that has a certification, that's how rigorous it is. And I think there's three in the state of Kansas and Missouri, and so it's very rigorous that would add value to our seven and to our kids. The other piece that you'll see there, and I will add this to the second or third bullet, sometimes goes a little underappreciated, but there is cost associated with the fact that our district funds a percentage of retirement for our PSRS folks is 14 and 1/2% per certified member that the district matches, and for our support classified staff is 6.86%. And once again, those are based upon requirements by PSRS and peers. And then through our survey, and Julie was mentioning this earlier, which was about 370 some pages, we also have voted to continue to fund the individual employee costs of health, dental insurance, long-term disability insurance, employee assistance, and life insurance. And I want to stop there just for a second. We are very fortunate to have a supportive Team Lee Summit and supportive board, because we are benefit-rich. If you look at other districts in this area, they do not have the benefits that we do. They have maybe sick days, but they do not have long-term, short-term medical leave. So if you are going through a pregnancy in another district, you may have to use your own days and then simply get docked. Where here in Lee Summit, if you meet the requirements, you know, you have up to 115 days of 100% pay, 100% retirement, and your normal medical coverage. So congratulations to Team Lee Summit, I appreciate it, and a shout-out to Phyllis and Julie, who serve on the team, they've been a wonderful addition. And so at this time, I would answer any questions that the board might have.
Any questions, board? Okay, let's get a motion on the table, please.
I move that the board approve the Team LS salary and benefit recommendations as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, or Jackie, you had a...
I just want to thank everybody for the hard work, you know, being part of the benefits committee. I, I know a degree of what goes into this work, and I've heard nothing but positive feedback from the process, so thank you, Dr. Miller, and the others who have been engaged in the conversation.
Thank you, we have a great team.
I just like to echo that also, having the opportunity to sit on that, as an employee, for several years, several years ago, it was unique, that probably, Team Lee Summit probably came about about 19...
'94.
'94, '95, somewhere in there, with the, with the Dr. Stansberry's leadership to do that. Once again, it goes back, I mean, it's not just their certified staff that's represented on there, it is classified, and there are hours and hours spent on that committee, all for the benefit, and I, Dr. Miller, you'd know more about this than I do, but I doubt that there's very many districts statewide and nationwide that have that kind of team work to, to bring that off what we're approving tonight and what's been approved in the past.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion on the table, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next piece is the, to approve our reemployment of administrative staff and contracts.
I move that the board approve to reemploy the administrative staff listed in the attachment and approve contracts.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on this motion?
I, I would like to add real quick, when you hit F5, there were two gentlemen in there that were updated. We had some late hires and late resignations, and when we ran our administrative report two days ago, Mr. Bonnison, Dr. Bonnison was in there as an assistant principal, and you'll notice that he's got a new position there, which we'll be talking about here in just a little bit. And then Derek Hartley, who's assistant principal at Pleasantly Elementary, he has taken a position down at Harrisonville as a building principal, and so we had to remove his name. So I just want to point those out for clarification to the board. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And the next portion is to reemploy our probationary certified staff and contracts. Dr. Miller, continue.
Absolutely, seems to be my area here.
Excuse me, I think we need a motion on the next item?
Well...
Or not?
It, just as, as information, we can, we'll go ahead.
Pretty, pretty, I guess, to the point here. If you look underneath the probationary certified staff, we do this every March, I could tell you, once again, I would be more happy to answer your questions, very proud of the people we have here and the work that they do, so.
Now a motion.
I move that the board approve to reemploy the probationary certified staff listed in the attachment and approve contracts.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on this motion? Jackie? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and next, our personnel report.
I think that's probably last on my list. Once again, if you look through there, we do have some late-minute adds. Anything that's in green, of course, is this week, and anything that's red, we updated today. And so we also have a couple of special announcements pending Board of Education approval of this report. More than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, let's get a motion on the table, please.
I move to approve the personnel transactions as presented in contracts issued.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Julie?
I just want everyone to know that I'm going to abstain, I have a niece that's getting a promotion, and this is how I heard about it, I'm reading. And so I text her, did you get a promotion that Aunt Juju doesn't know? So I just want you to know that I would just be abstaining, thanks.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we have one abstention, Linda. Okay.
And I think pending Dr. Carpenter or Dr. Sharp or Dr. Kephart, we have a couple introductions here.
Sure, I will certainly start us out. I would like to welcome, and in our, in our audience today, I would like to welcome Dr. Troy Hogg, who will be serving as the new principal at Hawthorne Hill Elementary for the 2018-19 school year. Dr. Hogg is currently the principal at Kaiser Elementary School in the Kirkwood School District, and has 13 years of administration experience. Dr. Hogg has served as the principal at Kaiser for the last three years, and was the principal at Benton STEM Elementary in Columbia for several years prior to that. Dr. Hogg has served as an assistant principal and teacher in Columbia, Sedalia, Osage, and the Jefferson City School Districts. In addition, he has been an exchange teacher in Japan for three years. So we are excited to have he and his wife and two boys join us in the Lee Summit family and serve as the new principal at Hawthorne Hill. So, welcome, we're glad to have you.
Welcome. Thank you, Dr. Kephart. I would like to also introduce, and in our audience this evening, is Dr. Jeremy Bonnison, which is very cool for me to introduce, because you now have three of the four STA building principals in the room with you right now. Dr. Bonnison has a, has a unique experience and a lens through Summit Technology Academy as a longtime teacher of 25 years here in the Lee Summit School District. He has as a parent, as a counselor, bringing seventh and eighth graders over for a lot of years. He's the first-time AP in the school's history, and now he's moved on to be the fourth leader in a, in a program that is a shining star here in our school district. He brings a lot of fire, passion, he's all in there at STA, he's very well-connected, he's been a big part of the movement and the growth of that school, from one class of 13 kids to now almost nearly 600 students across 20 some odd schools. Dr. Bonnison's going to do a great job, and I can't thank him enough. Dr. Bonnison.
I just might add that Dr. Bonnison's wife's also a faculty member in our district, a teacher, and I think they have two of their boys here.
Oh, yeah.
And Taylor is not here.
Taylor's not here.
Okay. Appreciate the work that Anna Beth does, too.
Okay, we have a presentation from our annual program evaluation for Health Services.
It's my pleasure to introduce Terry Hanson, she's our district RN coordinator. Terry does a phenomenal job leading our nurses, who are just absolutely wonderful in the district, and she's going to give you a brief presentation tonight.
Thank you for allowing me to tout about our wonderful Health Services Department. It definitely takes a team. Sorry. So our mission statement tells a lot about us. Our main reason for being in part of the district is to be a support person. We have a great team, and we spend many hours as being either a support or a resource. We have a great team, and we spend many hours as being either a support or a resource. Our staffing structure, we have 17 RNs, 22 and 1/2 LPNs, because our half is a part-time LPN at Summit Ridge Academy. We have 18 health clerks. Kind of gives you the breakdown there. We have one RN that is over the before and after-school services for this year, and we have one RN that's full-time at Great Beginnings Early Education Center. We service 27 health rooms and the before and after-school services program. RNs also provide emergency response and coverage for Summit Technology and Summit Ridge and for Hilltop. Just to kind of give you an overview of how busy we are in our health rooms, so far this year, we've seen 72,000-plus, and that was through the end of February. What I think is more impressive, our job is to actually keep students in school. Believe it or not, we don't like to send students home. So, we send about 10% back, or we only send about 10% home. Everybody else goes back to class, whether they like it or not. And so that kind of gives you there. We have administered over 32,000 medications so far this school year. That is down from previous years because of extended release medications. We have done over 16,000 health screenings, whether it's vision, blood pressure. We've had over 1,700 staff members also visit us in the health room. Our management talks with our parent calls, being part of our meetings for Section 504 and so forth, being part of meetings for that. So that kind of gives you a grand total that we've had 100 and, almost 140 encounters in the name of students for our district this year. With all that being said and all those encounters, we've only had to call 911 16 times. Total health concerns gives you an overview of what it looks like over the past three years. I do want to note that you'll notice a decrease in our numbers, and that is showing a decrease from when we went to online reporting. Parents tend to forget, as they're filling out that forms, all the health concerns that their students have had. We're hoping that some changing in wordings in our online enrollment forms will help with that a little bit this year, especially in the psychological disorders that may be on there. We know that's increasing, even though our numbers show that it is decreasing. Our big goal for RNs, we have a very professional staff of RNs in our district. The art of nursing defines what we do as task-related, but the science is, we are always looking at what's best practice, and that's what we're going to govern our practice by. Health screenings, tells you how many vision screenings we've done this year. Our hearing screenings, we're very blessed to have our speech-language department will do those for us. We actually had a pretty good year. We only had 6.5% of our students that were referred on for vision and less than 1% for hearing issues. So that kind of gives you, we have three schools that's taking part of the Healthy Kids Program, which is part of Cerner, Westview, Meadow Lane, and LSE, and that talks about their referrals that they sent through that program. Vision screenings through KidSite Vision Program is part of Lions Club. We tried to partner with local community organizations that are known for this, and they worked with Summit Lakes and Great Beginnings this year, and they actually sent out 21 referrals for those. We had some pretty lofty goals this year. One of our big ones is we want to increase our professional development so that our staff can stay up-to-date with the latest evidence-based practice. So we've had a great day, along with the support of Dr. Miller. We had a wonderful professional day for all of our health services staff. In November, all of our health clerks and LPNs have now been certified and went through the training for school crisis casualty care, which is the next step after active shooter training. All of our RNs attended the behavior intervention training in January, and just this month, on Friday, March 2nd, all RNs took an eight-hour course on mental health first aid and have all become certified with that. We have seven RNs that are attending our state conference in April. And then, as always, across all departments, I think, our big one is to increase consistency. If an RN walks into any building in the district, they should be able to just pick right up so that our consistency's staying the same. So we have reviewed several procedures at our back-to-school training, plus we continually monitor our policies and procedures to make sure that we're following those, or if they're not up-to-date with the best practice, that we work with administration on getting those Some staff accomplishments, because I have to tout, I keep telling everybody what a great staff that I have. We currently have four RNs that are nationally certified, school nurses. To give you an idea of what that looks like, there's only 41 in the state of Missouri that are nationally certified out of over 1,000 school nurses. And we have two more RNs that are sitting for their certification this month. So I feel like that says a lot. Cheryl Orr, one of our RNs, is a member of the Lee Summit Health Education Advisory Board and is very active in that. She's also secretary for our Greater Kansas City School Nurse Association. I get the privilege of being the education chair for our state organization. Gina Gavin works closely with Dr. Miller on Team Lee Summit. And then Rebecca Litten, another of our RNs, is a member of the Smiles for a Lifetime Board, which helps with students in need that need orthodontic work, get free orthodontia care. So that's pretty much our health services department in a nutshell. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions?
Great report.
It's a great report. I just have a question. I've been hearing this week that there's been an outbreak of measles in some of these, and they're talking about people that are going through airports. It's spring break. Are you picking up on anything here in the area?
We know that there has been some confirmed cases in the metro area, but nothing in our Lee Summit community as of yet. But just to kind of show you, Missouri has been, if you guys follow the CDC reports, Missouri has been one of the leading states with the influenza outbreak this year. As a matter of fact, last week, we were still listed as high for influenza. So it shows how fast that any of those can occur, and we do have an increase in exempted students from immunization, so we will be keeping a close eye on the measles. Thank you. Good luck with that. Thank you. And I did want to add, just to give you an idea, because we did have such an influenza outbreak this year. Last year during our January, we had 83 confirmed cases of influenza. This year, we had 439. Last year during the month of February, we had 215 confirmed cases of influenza. This year, we had 534. And we're still seeing cases, so, just to kind of give you an idea. It's not a, it's usually not the RNs that get sick, we take it home to our families.
Thank you. Okay, we have several items of information that are written reports. We have the annual program evaluation for guidance and counseling, the annual program evaluation for purchasing and distribution, and also our facilities and maintenance project update. Does anyone have any questions or comments about those reports? Kim?
Yes, I just wanted to comment on our guidance and, our program evaluation for guidance and counseling. Dr. Hill, thank you for a very comprehensive report on our guidance and counseling department. The professional school counselor time-task totals were very interesting to me and very revealing concerning the amount of time that our counselors are spending on the various tasks associated with their positions. When noting the DESI-suggested percentages, it's clear that our counselors are spending time on non-school counseling tasks, time that could be devoted to what they do, which is responsive services, which addresses the immediate needs and concerns of our students. So, and I see that you're using this information in your continuous improvement process to try to make some valuable changes so that frees our counselors up for more time to spend directly helping kids with their issues from day to day. So many thanks to all of our counselors in the district for their time and care for providing for our students, and thank you for that good report.
Okay, any other questions or comments on written reports? If not, we'll go to roundtable, and Jackie, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got to get my notes out, so I stay on task here. Just wanted to reiterate that what a nice job the Educational Foundation did with this year's Lee Summit, Taste of Lee Summit. On a lighter note, I was able to represent the board at the first weekend of spring training at Surprise, Arizona, and was able to greet our former superintendent Bernard Campbell's son and daughter, son and his wife, daughter-in-law, Jack and Marcia Campbell. So you can go a long way from Lee Summit and still see good people tied to the district. And then, I don't know whether to say this is on a sad note, but I think it really shows the goodness of people, it's really through the metro area, but particularly here in Lee Summit. I don't know how many people have seen today on social media the Casey for Corey efforts. A lot of, lot of good kindness activities have been underway pretty much since the 1st of March. There are some t-shirts that are available out there. And Corey left us a year ago today at age 38 with stage IV pancreatic cancer. I'm a good friend of his mom and his widow and their daughter. They, and I don't want to ignore any school, I hope I haven't missed it, but I know that the Cedar Creek Elementary family today has really just done a great job. They've done kindness coupon books, they've created a kindness quilt. One of the students apparently was in Lowenstein Park writing kindness messages on the sidewalk, it was a beautiful afternoon. Some folks went to a couple of fire departments. I know some third graders visited John Knox Care Center. This is the kind of proactive movement that I just, it just melts my heart. I think it's wonderful the way people were paying things forward today at Sonics, and I don't mean to just call out brand names or anything, but this is what I've seen on social media, and these are our people in Lee Summit, our seven, our community broadly. And I just want to say a personal thanks because I knew Corey. Corey was a great guy. It was just too bad he was from another school district, but he moved here, okay? He moved here. So, and like I said, his widow is one of our employees and a great lady, and I'm just grateful that we were able to get her before everything happened as it did last, last spring in about a month's time. So, thank you for listening.
Yes?
I really don't have it because it's just kind of the same as the evening's gone on. Some of the very great things that have gone on in Lee Summit in the last couple months. I will say again, back to the Taste of Lee Summit, I, my wife and I invited two other couples to sit at our table that, well, one of the couples does live here in Lee Summit, it is a graduate of Lee Summit Schools. My other was a cousin and her husband who lives in another school district, and they came, and they, they were blown away by the camaraderie, the fellowship that was, that was in Taste of Lee Summit that night, and how our community comes together. I want to wish the staff and students and parents, whether you're doing a stay-home vacation or going somewhere next week, to staycation, to enjoy a well-deserved rest time. Thank you.
Julie?
I was too going to say something about having a nice spring break or just a break from the multitude of kids that we have. Then, it just popped into my head that I would like some kind of report on the innovation track. You know, who's going, how many, from what school, so I'm just going to throw that out there now. And then I'm going to get on my soapbox. I would like to take this time to talk about the upcoming election, and no, I'm not talking about the board election, or the board race. I feel that with John and Ryan, and I don't know the third person, I apologize for that, but I feel like with us, whoever sits in Adam in my seat will actually be nice people. Last night, I have to admit, I got up from one of the candidates speaking. I thought he was very disrespectful, and to take his 60 seconds, that he was supposed to put, I hate to say he, but it was, to take his 60 seconds to discuss his personal platform, but to just dog on the person he's running with, I just want everyone to think about who we're voting for, because if we're voting for someone like that, then at any dais, that's what we're going to get. So I just, I have to say something. I didn't like his demeanor. And, so please vote April 3rd and vote wisely. And, you know, our town is top-notch, so we should vote on top-notch. And I'm done, off my soapbox.
Adam?
Regarding the walkouts, I'm not sure how this got kind of tagged as a political issue. I can't think of anything less political than school safety. And I'll try to not get emotional here, because with, ah, can't even say, don't get emotional without getting emotional.
We're wimps.
So, I mean, with my kids, I try to, my wife and I try to teach them a lot, doesn't always work, they're three and five. But some of the things we're working on is that they can talk to us if they're sad, if they're scared, or if they need help. This was not a political thing that happened. It was our kids in our schools talking to us and saying those things, and I hope people listen. Not these people. We always, we're always listening, and we care what they think, but nationwide, I just hope people listen, and that's what this was all about for me. On a lighter note, so I don't have to end on that. Taste of Lee Summit was amazing. I about made a, what seemed like a great decision that night, and bought a puppy. But I kept my hand down, and next couple days, as I actually started to think about it, it was a great decision that I didn't get a puppy. But I did get a lovely dinner for me and my wife and six friends that we get from the Gales, and I, it's already, it's already been allocated, Julie, I'm sorry, but. And it's just a wonderful event, and I think everybody who goes really enjoys it, plus it's excellent for kids, so thank you.
Kim?
Okay, thanks, Bob. This past month, I've had the pleasure of visiting several schools. I've visited Lee Summit Elementary, and I got to go out on the playground during that visit and hang out with the kids a little bit, that was fun. Meadow Lane Elementary, doing great things over there, enjoyed Cheryl Cochran's tour of Meadow Lane. Lee Summit West High School, visiting with Chad Herzog, and I went to see our Life Skills Kids and as many of our other classrooms. Trail Ridge Elementary, Jessica Alfaro showed me around and gave me an excellent tour, and I heard the most wonderful little persuasive essay from a fourth-grade girl who, they were working on these essays when I walked into the room, and we left and went over to the art room, but her teacher made her follow us with her little, with her Chromebook and read us her essay, and it was on school safety. And it was, I even encouraged her to come tonight and speak at comments because it was so good. It was just the best essay, written from the heart of a fourth-grade girl on that. So, anyway, great visit there. And then today, I finished off at Summit Point Elementary. Many thanks to all of those terrific principals for taking their time out of, they are very busy people, and it was so nice of them to give time to allow us to come into their buildings and tour them. I'm not going to say anything about LSE if I was just, I was on the group. I worked for two days with Cheryl to try to get it in gear, but- I worked for two days with Cheryl to try to get it in gear, but anyway, you know, it was fun. I will say something. I want to give a shout-out to Linda Ismer down there, our administrative secretary for the board. She is fabulous because she did check-in, she escorted VIPs, and she did check out for purchases, and so she is a star on all of those. Great job, great help. Also visited Summit Lakes for a peak grant visit to take pictures and document some of the great peak grants that were awarded last year. So we, we go out and we do little peak grant report cards to see them in action. And so this was a project called Spheros, and they're little mechanical spheres that the kids can program and, and go through a, kind of an obstacle course and, and learn how to program. It's really, really cool. So that was fun. I also attended Richardson, like President White said, Richardson Elementary's 25th anniversary and Pleasantly Elementary's Leadership Day. Super impressed with all of the kids and their leadership skills because those kids actually led the Richardson Celebration for 25 years, and the Pleasantly Elementary Leadership Day, those kids led that whole assembly, and they were terrific. So our kids are getting great skills, they have wonderful people working with them, and I'm so pleased to be able to visit with them, and thanks to all of, all of the folks that make that happen.
Dr. Carpenter?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I'll begin by going back, and I appreciate the information relative to the flu, and you'll get a copy of a letter tomorrow, but in that letter, the cooperating school districts in the Greater Kansas City School Administrators Association had our executive director pen a letter to DESI to talk about potential accommodations for school districts relative to 17, 18, 88, and also the 90-90 attendance standard. And we have to be mindful of that, too, as a school district, although we have a high attendance threshold, having a drop this year could have impact in future years. So we penned that letter, and I'll be sharing it with you tomorrow during the board update. Also, as the chief executive officer or superintendent or whatever you might want to call it of this school district, I'd be remiss if I didn't do this, and so I'm going to do it. First of all, I want to apologize to my leadership team because I feel like we up here have gotten a little bit off of our norms. And on the 7th and 8th, we spent some time, and we spent some time during our institute, and we did some great work. We established our governance routines, priorities, and those priorities, we've tried to keep them at the forefront this year. But another thing we did, and we don't need to lose sight of it, is we developed board superintendent norms. And one of those norms, under the most basic category of respect, is relative to not surprising each other. And so I think last week, we felt a little surprised, and this, last month, I'm sorry, in this month, I feel a little more surprised. So I'm just going to ask for you all's help with that as we continue to try and govern this school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carpenter. I really have nothing else to share, so we are adjourned.